Executive session.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Boston. Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor of exiting executive session? Mr. Parsons, would you?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, I move to certify that to the best of our knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were intended in the motion to go into the executive session were heard, discussed, and considered an executive session.
Thank you. Mr. Sacagawea?
Yes.
Mr. Boston?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I would like to ask us to have a moment of remembrance and silence, please, this evening. Okay, well, stand and have a pledge. Mr. Sacagawea?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God pray for us.
Dr. Brown, do we have any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Need approval for finalizing our agenda? Thank you, Mr. Boston. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. All in favor? Approval of the minutes of July the 15th, 2021.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Boston. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Sacagawea. All in favor? Dr. Brown, let's bring us to the recognitions.
Yes, Madam Chair. I ask Mr. Fletcher, Assistant Superintendent, for lead that... Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the board, a pleasure to catch us back up on our recognitions. Most of this is from the end of the year last year. But to start with, we'd like to recognize our students from each of the three high schools that had the highest GPA, the valedictorians. So I'd like to ask them to come forward, and I know some of them are already in college and will be here tonight. We are very honored to have them recognized tonight. We're going to present their portrait, and then we're going to take it back and hang it upstairs. All right, that would be Abigail Grace Baker from Castlewood High School, Akala Grace Boyd from Honaker High School, and Emily Tyler Music from Levitton High School. Those individuals, their families, and their administrators, if you've come forward, if they're able to be here. And they're all in school, they're honored. Though it is an honor to recognize those people, and Dr. Brown, we'd like to present those to the principals, and then we'll hang them upstairs.
Of course, Abby, you know, in the midst of a crazy year, she was still able to maintain to show up and involve and cheer, maintain the GPA, and it was difficult. But at the end of the day, maintaining what she had to do to maintain her rank, and super proud of her. Abby will be attending East Tennessee State in the fall, or now, or sometime. She, I think, has a bright future in front of her. I'm just awful proud of her accomplishments.
I'd say the same thing about Akala Boyd. She was our valedictorian this year. You know, super hard work ethic, astonishingly great in the classroom academically, but she was also really good on the basketball court. She set Honaker High School records for most three corners, and she is in the top five in all state three corners. Very proud of her. She attended the University of Tennessee in Knoxville. She stopped her dad yesterday, and she went into her dorm room, and she told her dad that she thought she was going into a prison, and he said, "Well, honey, the only thing they can do that for us is to study and sleep in." Very proud of Akala. Like I said, hard worker, great student, and really going to miss her.
Emily Music, she also outstanding student, all around, wonderful student, wonderful person, involved in lots of different things in school beyond academics. She was the first one to sign up to come back to school when they could come back four days a week, and was there every day, even though most of her classmates were not. Also played softball, played basketball, and did very well in those as well. Emily is also attending the University of Tennessee and has high aspirations. I had her in admin physiology last year, but think she's willing to be a orthopedic surgeon. So I hope for this young girl.
All right, next, we have FBLA state winners from last spring, Castlewood High School, Chassidy Holly and Lauren Johnson. If you and your parents would come forward, along with your sponsors, if they're here, and we'll get Mr. Robertson back in here in just a second. That will be Mr. Robertson.
It's a pleasure, if they may I take.
Want to tell us a little bit about?
Chassidy's wins. Lauren, I don't know her forever, I don't know her number one forever. Second place state, right? Barely missed one of the nationals, but 24 of our students competed virtually, and was able to come through with this second place. In itself speaks volumes, to be able to do this competition at that level and achieve this award is amazing. It speaks a lot of everything you do, truly. I've gotten one system competing, trying various activities, volleyball, and just, you know, this, if you notice, don't surprise you. We're super proud of you, your accomplishments, look forward to doing this again next year. Hopefully, an in-person competition, and maybe head off to nationals, I don't know where it's at this year, but hopefully, Chicago. That's a good plan, so absolutely. Really proud of what you've done and what you do for our school.
The board has a little token for you, presented to Lauren Johnson, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board, in recognition of winning second place in supply chain management at the 2021 FBLA State Leadership Conference. Then we have presented to Chassidy Holly, Castlewood High School, by Russell County School Board, in recognition of winning third place, and introduction to parliamentary procedures at the 2021 FBLA State Leadership Conference.
Ladies, it's been a pleasure. Next, we have three state winners from Cat, sorry, Honaker High School. That's Mr. Bush, and Miss Compton, I think, is here, along with these students and their parents, Catherine Jessie, David Dales, and Zane Johnson. If you'd come forward, please. Mr. Bush, if you'd like to speak a little bit, and then we'll ask the... Miss Compton, just say a few words about the competition issue.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Zane Johnson. A fine outstanding young man. I don't know if any other student in my school has had a better work ethic than Mr. Zane Johnson. I can tell you that. Zane excels in the classroom, excels in anything that he does academically or collectively. That's a cross-country course, play football course, fine outstanding young man. I think he did a thing, Eagle Scout.
I'm working.
Working on his Eagle Scout. I must finish up with his Eagle Scout, but I will have to say that very proud of Zane to finish in fourth place in the state, FBLA competition, and through business communication. And I look forward to having him at Honaker High School again this year, and you'll probably see him there many, many times after this. I'll see, as those abilities, he can do anything he says he's fine to do, and he's not only a great student, he's a great person.
Miss Compton, your...
This year's just been challenging for us all, but Zane overcame every challenge that was thrown his way, and there were days he kept me straight, so I appreciate that. He's very organized, and I think that his success is based off of his organization.
The board has a token for... The board has a token for their appreciation for your work, presented to Zane Johnson, Honaker High School, by the Russell County School Board, in recognition of winning fourth place, and introduction to business communication at the 2021 State Leadership Conference. And for the two individuals not here tonight, Catherine Jessie, presented to Catherine Jessie, Honaker High School, by Russell County School Board, in recognition of winning fifth place in the county one, the 2021 Leadership Conference. Also presented to David Dales, Honaker High School, by Russell County School Board, in recognition of fifth place in the county two, at the 2021 State Leadership Conference.
Now, we'd like to invite the Levitton High School 2021 State Baseball Champions, Group 2A, Hunter Hurtig, Zach Hurtig, Nick Belcher, Sage Potts, Anthony Hodgins, Preston Steele, Seth McCannon, Matthew McCannon, Tanner Keys, Dagan Barton, and Chandler Morrison to come forward with the coaching staffs, administrators. I think the board would like to come up and stand behind your child up here.
Sure.
Parents, just come up and stand around your son. All right, Miss Fletcher, would you like to say a few words about this all?
I feel like there's so much you can say about this team and their coaches. This is probably the most dedicated and one of the most hard-working teams that I've seen at Levitton High School over the years. They worked day in, day out. They never gave up on the dream of winning that state championship. And not only did they want it for themselves, but for Coach Adams as well, who's also been working toward that dream for many years now, and finally got it. But Levitton High School couldn't be more proud of you guys. So thank you to the parents for being supportive of your kids, all of our coaching staff, Dr. Brown, Mr. Fletcher, our board. Thank you, guys, for your unwavering support throughout the whole process for this team, and it'll be great.
Coach Adams has retired from teaching. I don't think he's retired from coaching, maybe, but he's retired from teaching. We'd like to give you an opportunity to speak about your team.
First of all, I'd like to say, thank the Russell County School Board, the town eleven, and everybody, really, that supported the Levitton High School baseball team, because I saw everybody from everywhere that was supporting us this year. Before my team year, I've had a lot of teams in my coaching career, but this team right here really did everything I asked for. We had a vision. We had a dream. And I think on June 26, 2021, we met that dream. And like I said, I couldn't ask for a better bunch of young men. Good thing I like about these young men is they're good baseball players. They get friends. They get things on and off the field together. But what I like best about them, everything I asked from them, they gave it to me, and I think they're well-deserved for what they got.
We have, again, flags for members of the team and one for the team to be put in the halls of Levitton High School. Presented to Levitton High School baseball team by Russell County School Board, in recognition of their outstanding achievement of winning first place in the 2021 VHSL Group 2A State Baseball Tournament, August 2021. And this one is for Hunter Hurtig. Zach Hurtig. Nick Belcher. Sage Potts. Anthony Hodgins. Preston Steele. Seth McCannon. Matthew McCannon. Tanner Keys. Dagan Barton. Chandler Morrison. And then we have our coaching staff, Wade Compton. Paul His. Cody Compton. Will Stamper. Charles Doc Adams. On the final plaque that will be in the halls of Levitton High School, I can say one thing about Coach Adams. I played college baseball about 100 pounds ago, and, you know, things that I've heard from Coach Adams when I would go to a ballgame are things that, you know, I heard when I was in college. When I was in high school, I didn't hear those things come from my high school coach. I had a pretty good coach, but I can tell five years ago, Levitton High School had something special with Coach Adams, and Doc, I've been impressed from day one, and just as impressed today.
You know, we honor our students for their hard work and dedication, and the parents you support, but we don't mean to forget the teachers, the FBLA, and those sponsors that keep us going, the fans. And it makes it extra nice tonight to be able to recognize Employee of the Year. We all have recognized 10 Support Employees of the Month and 10 Teachers of the Month throughout the past year, and all 10 of those winners in each category were submitted to the committee that scores these and judges them for us, and we're happy tonight to present to you Employee of the Year. The Support Employee is Brian Jessie, Levitton Middle School. And the Teacher of the Year, Amanda Browning, formerly of Copper Creek, that she has since applied for and been placed at the Prince Technology Center as Instructional Technology Teacher. This is a great honor for you, and we're so very proud of you, and I have that you have stayed this way.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. We're down to the developments on the agenda this evening.
Yes, ma'am. Michelle Vance contacted Ms. Garrett.
Good evening.
Three minutes, and tell us your name and where you're from, please.
Michelle Vance, Russell County, Marcusson Valley.
Thank you.
I didn't get to speak at the last meeting. I had a family emergency, so I couldn't speak. Y'all called my name, but... At the last meeting, most of the parents and grandparents walked away thinking they had a victory, because it was stated that schools are compliant and did not have to specifically adopt model policies. That victory was quickly deflated. I contacted Dr. Brown via email after the meeting, as he requested during the last meeting, and asked my questions directly to him. I thought I was pretty specific in my questions. I have a copy of the emails here, if you all would like to see them. But there was no yes or no answer. There was just spewing of the codes of Virginia. He stated the model policies are not referenced in the Russell County policies, but they will work with the parent and the student to determine specifics and follow the law. In the Russell County Nondiscrimination Policy, it states, "Russell County Public Schools shall not discriminate on the basis of race, color, national, origin, religion, age, disability, or gender." It also states that Russell County is to comply with both the letter and spirit of the law in making certain that discrimination does not exist in its policies, regulations, and operations. Since you've confirmed that you are in compliance with Virginia Code 22.1-23.3, Treatment of Transgender Students Policies, you are saying you are compliant with Number Eight of this policy, which states, "Student participation in sex-specific school activities and events and use of school facilities," which is exactly what we were speaking about at the last meeting. As the only answer I could get from Dr. Brown was, "The current practices are that administration is expected or required to follow Russell County School Policy, the Code of Virginia, federal law, and any other requirements imposed on public schools in Virginia. Your statement of being compliant with the model policy is not enough." I'm not going to go over the whys, because I believe it was made very clear at the last meeting, all the whys. All children are protected by these policies. There's a very fine line where your rights end and mine begin, and my grandchildren's rights as well. You chose to be in those seats to be the voice of our children. If you won't stand up and take action, then we, as parents and grandparents, will. I have two school-age grandchildren here in Russell County. However, because of this county's unwillingness to stand up for them, their parents have decided to homeschool them. That's at least $24,000 that is going to be cut from your budget. Our fight now will be taken to another level for school choice. It's my It's my suggestion that you start looking at where you're going to cut your budget.
Thank you, Ms. Vance.
If it was my decision, I would start from the top down. Meeting, Dr. Brown.
Okay, do you have an opportunity to look at the bills? Thank you, Mr. Postick. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Brown, it brings us to the resignations and retirements.
Yes, ma'am, Chair. We have a list here for the board's review and approval.
I would just like to say, well, for everyone, for whatever reasons they choose to transfer to other jobs or retire or whatever, but I looked on the computer before I came in this evening, and there was a friend that has given, she's given her entire work career to Russell County Schools, and that's Carmen Pegg. And she has been a truly caring, best driver and watched after each and every one of those students, just like they were her own grandchild or child she was. And we're going to miss her, but we're going to wish her the very best with her retirements. All in favor of... And yeah, we do need a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, ma'am, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Sacagawea. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Brown, new personnel and transfers.
Yes, ma'am, Chair. We have a fairly lengthy list there for the board's review.
Okay, do we have a motion that we approve new personnel? Thank you, Mr. Postick. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor of the new hires and transfers? Okay, Dr. Brown, approval of the reopening?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. We do have one action item, adjustments that we have to make to our reopening plan. Staff to review today's health, public health emergency order provided by the Virginia Health Commissioner and guidance from State Superintendent, Virginia Department of Health, Governor's Office, Legal Counsel, Cent. 1303, and also review the local metrics for the transmission of COVID-19 in the region. With that being said, the recommendation tonight, due to the Health Commissioner's Public Health Order, staff recommend Russell County Public Schools transition to requiring masks indoors for all staff, students, and visitors over the age of 2, again within our schools, as required with the expectation to reevaluate masks being optional as soon as legally permissible. Staff will continue to monitor the transmission rates for our area and recommendations from the CDC.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Hopefully, they can get them back, as quick as possible.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a coronavirus update? Okay, we neither. Motion?
This is still an action item. We left it there, ma'am, Chair.
Okay. Then we will need... Do you need a motion?
Something.
And a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Sacagawea. All in favor?
Can we speak before we go?
Sure. Yes, please go ahead.
Instead of Governor through the Health Department, they did what he did about masks. If you don't know, he mandated anybody wear a mask indoors. This time, they attached a criminal code to it. It's, I want to say Mr. Minister, he operated. So he took the choice away from us. You need to remember that. He took, you know, he took the choice away from us. It's a moot point. We were out of supporting, prepared tonight to make a motion, masks be option. But the Governor, through the Health Department, I don't think he's pregnant, he did it himself, put that order out today.
He had a very hard break, but he got to live with that.
Well, we will keep this on our agenda month to month. Is that great?
Yes, sir.
Bring us up every month.
And it would be great if nationally, if they would be concerned about our southern border.
Yeah. We're out there.
Yeah. Of course, that's a whole big issue there, but...
We got the CDC and knock it out, figure total hypocrites. The war is wide open. They stay silent on that, but they want our kids in masks and Americans in masks, while they let thousands daily go off the border. Eighteen to twenty percent of our policy COVID. All they do is they put them on buses or planes and ship them across this country. So if they care about COVID, and our Governor, I never say COVID or war, you know, if they care, they would say COVID is a border. That is the true sister of everything. And if our Governor and officials cared about Virginians, why would they legalize the illegal threat?
Leaders walk.
Everybody knows our laws are heavily threatened. That's the hypocrisy of it all. Amen.
Amen.
And then don't follow it. As Russell County say, no, we're not going to do it. Law or not, they don't follow the rules, why should we? Or order.
And a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Thank you. Hey, Dr. Brown, do you have a coronavirus update?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. We continue to monitor the health metrics and so forth, communication daily with the Health Department and other providers. You know, the information that has been provided to schools in southwest Virginia in Region 7 is, of course, that the numbers are increasing. There is a larger population of, of course, juveniles in that due to the fact that juveniles, of course, do not have the vaccine at this point in time. So that's a variable that is coming into play as well. Compared to where we were at last year, ma'am, Chair, I was thinking back on this earlier today, you know, when I was looking at this particular item. You know, this time last year, we were talking about required social distancing, no athletics, no common areas being used and such, just to name a few things. And of course, those things are not in place. Hopefully, they won't be reinstated, but those things are not in place now. So we're, you know, looking toward the future. Hopefully, we can reevaluate mask mandate here in the near future. Hopefully, things improve, but, you know, again, we're meeting now with the State Superintendent on a weekly basis and the Health Department as well, providing us with information daily, meeting weekly again. So, but that's our other thing, ma'am, Chair.
And also, Dr. Brown, you mentioned that you will work with the employees, the teachers, to allow maybe mask breaks or...
Oh, absolutely.
Give it a little bit of, you know, and if they're outside on the playground, they wouldn't be required as well.
Right. Anything outside would not be required. We'll deal with the credits and mask breaks and so forth for those longer periods of time. We'll be working with the administrators. We, of course, have dealt with that. We dealt with that in the spring, so we know what to do when we're dealing with those things.
First reading of policies?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. We have our next wave of policies for the year. Again, as a member of the Virginia School Board Association, Russell County Public Schools periodically receives the ESDA policy updates to be examined by our School Board for implementation and Russell County Public Schools Policy Manual. Policies under consideration, you can see under the policy tab on Board docs for the board members. This will be an item for the board next month.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. The sales tax for July, $369,275.20?
I'll make a motion.
We don't need Mr. Parsons. Thank you. Okay, the board had an opportunity for the maintenance report, spin into report. Have future agenda items, Dr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. Again, we'll have the school reopening plan on the agenda again next month for discussion and adjustments if allowable at that time. We'll continue with coronavirus update. We're thinking about phasing that out, but we'll continue with that. And again, the first readings of policies that'll be an action item for board consideration next month.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Delegations not on the agenda this evening?
Yes, anyone like to speak to the board?
Right here. Thank you. Three minutes. Stay for your friend and go forward.
Nathan Kaiser, Ledden.
Thank you.
Had a few questions to follow up on the last board meeting. And I know you can't do back and forth, but it would be nice if the board would make these, answer these questions in public. First one is, will the school system discipline teachers for not using pronouns requested by the students? That's one thing I think is very important, that teachers know that they're not being disciplined by the school system. Second one, will students be allowed to use the bathroom in the, with the gender of their choice? And by state law, that is required. So just so you know, I just want to know if you're going to follow state law or if you're not. This one kind of falls off of that one. Will the school system convert the bathrooms to accommodate the law and provide safe single-use bathrooms for all students? Or will you force the kids to have boys and girls, or even girls and boys, right? And lastly, will racial or social bias training be a continued part of teacher training? So critical race theory, as Dr. Brown mentioned, is not necessarily a curriculum item that is on, on the curriculum of the state of Virginia. However, the curriculum goes through the process and is filtered through the lens of critical race theory. So your history is then mulled down to what the critical race theory version of history is. It's more anti-American, it's more white guilt, it's all these things that go into it. And my wife did her continuing education for a teacher's license, and part of that continuing education was for racial and social bias training, which is CRT, that's what it is, without a doubt. It's telling you because you're white, you're guilty of some form of racism, and if you don't think you are, that itself is a form of racism. So go figure it out. I can't, but it's absolutely ridiculous, and it is part of teacher training and is part of the curriculum, even though it's not a curriculum item on the tally, on the subjects. So be aware of that. Make sure you look into that. It's very important. The future of our country depends on the children of the day. We need to be raising them right to love America and care about their communities, but not be socially and racially toned in a way that's actually creating more division than it's helping. It really is. Critical race theory. And like it or not, since Barack Obama got elected, this country's been more racially divided than any time since Martin Luther King, ever since then. We've been healing as a nation since then, and when he came in president, he started dividing us. And we've been getting more divided every year because of what they're pushing through our school systems and our public systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser.
May I say something, ma'am, Chair? We have encouraged Dr. Brown to look into all schools, our example, want to come in, look at the restrooms, and giving us plans for remodeling to meet these things, and it's going to happen. And some of these items already, that you've talked about, has already been addressed, and it's going to work sort of like we have last little bit, and we're going to, it's going to work out, and we're going to get through this mess.
I hope so. I hope so for all our sakes.
Well, it's, 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 it seems like it's just one step back together. We're here.
Go ahead.
But we're going to, we're going to get through it, and it's going to be, it's not going to satisfy everybody, as you all know. You and your wife have differences, I'm sure, but you still live with it. And I'm still boss, and I still live a part. We're going to get through this mess, and we're going to try to look after all the students, and it's going to, it's going to work out. It's not going to be, it's not going to be a hundred percenter for everybody, and it's going to work out, and it's going to, it's going to be good, and this county's going to look forward. This, I'm proud of what the school system has done. As of right now, again, this past year, it was number 12 in the state, for countless reasons, was like second in the, first in the state in their scores, and we've got a lot to be proud of with these kids, and we're going to get through it, okay?
We're also asking Dr. Brown to, when he meets with the District 7 Superintendent, to request the restroom to help pay for his bathrooms, because it will be $2 to $3 million already. And we're going to almost pay cash. We don't have the money.
And our educational system, when you have industries looking to come into a community or into a region, they look at, that's probably one of the first things they look at before they even think about coming to locate in an area, is their education, how they rate, and all about the education system, because I know that from vast experience. They look at that. And I'm proud of our employees, very proud of all our teachers, and I am most proud of our students, just like they lined up here tonight. And when you drive through Abingdon and Worceville County, there were signs everywhere congratulating this Ledden team, and we've got a lot to be proud of. We're not a perfect wheel, but we do have a whole lot to be proud of. And I'm sorry, you know.
And we won't be allowing them to go in the bathroom until we, until we get ours.
And the pronoun use. We didn't adopt that policy, so I would never support any disturbance of a child or a teacher or administrator to use the appropriate pronoun. Matter of fact, I don't get to kill a girl after my sentence. So I told him all the lines, not the line. So I would never support anybody using proper pronouns.
Kids, sorry, we got, we got our kids.
My name's Jerry Connor, live at Doris Billfast. I come out of the building, leave at 4:40, I got my clothes early or something, I wanted to go there and do anything. But anyway, this is the letter, I guess Dr. Brown's the man that needs to get it. And it's just, I'm taking my kids out of school right now because there's a lot of stuff going on. Don't know what's going to happen, and I just feel like for now, we're going to homeschool our kids. So I put my name on there, my telephone number. If any questions, just feel free to call me. Thank you.
Thank you, and best of luck to you and your family. Anyone else?
I have a question. I have to walk over and ask the question. Even though y'all don't answer questions, he said. Did y'all not used to have a parent report this? I just started coming to these meetings, but we didn't pray tonight. Is that something different?
Yeah, sir. Yes, sir, that took it away from us.
When? When? I'm proud of this town and this county too, but I'm losing my faith. You letting the people come in and tell us we can't pray? I'll be praying for all of you. That's a bunch of horse lappies, what that is.
Sir, if you want to say a prayer, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
And we should.
You're welcome, then.
I will. We frankly appreciate it.
Father Brown, let us come before you right now, Lord, and I just, I raise this board up to you. Not trying to cause problems with them, but we need to be about your business and about the kids' business, and all about our agendas, and some men setting a prayer in Richmond's agenda. Lord, I just reject every one of them up to you, ask you to prick their hearts and deceive what it is that they need, and we need prayer. We need prayer in the schools. We need prayer everywhere, but I'm just at a loss right now, Lord. It's Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Okay, sir, just to be totally transparent, after our last meeting, we got a letter from Freedom from Religion out of Madison, Wisconsin.
Freedom from Wisconsin.
I mean, you know, when they go, or they looked at our agendas, and, you know, we say a prayer after we open the meeting. Now, you know, I, I, matter of fact, I asked the guy from the Family Foundation, Amy and other attorneys, Sarah, and they all say that once a meeting is open, once she gets that gathered, that one of us cannot say a prayer, because either it's government proposing, promoting religion. But for anybody else who wants to come here, say a prayer, we welcome that.
Every, every time I walk, I'm going to say one, because I think it is, it's wrong.
I agree. And the, all these, you know, all these, one of the attorneys, they said by the concept, you know, by Supreme Court rulings recently, that we would be in violation if one of us do it after she gets that gathered.
Or we invite you, but you're welcome to come.
That is, I appreciate it. You look where you at, people. I mean, look where you at. We're not... I'm not saying there's not somebody here that don't believe, and I pray to take it right. And I will pray for every one of you. I do. I, my kids are gone. I went to school here. I was in the first class. That's the man I never taught. The first class. I already, you know, I caused these problems, but, you know. I pray for y'all. I pray for all of our leaders. Ain't threatening nobody. But they don't, and y'all might come up and you saying, y'all can kiss my mask. I ain't, I ain't doing that, but no, I just want to...
We appreciate your prayer.
I just don't like it that I took it out. It's on the agenda. It says invocation. It did, it said invocation on there.
Well, I think I'm on the Southland side. Yeah, yeah. It says pledge. Oh, oh, I see. Yeah.
I did read it.
I agree. Well, Miss Allen said your same thing. You're, my dog will show the promotion.
Thank you for getting this out.
My name is Sean Vance. I live in Big Marcuson. I hear a lot of y'all saying that, you know, it's the government's roles, it's norms, rules. One thing I do know, you're teaching our children, is how to bend the knee. If you do not bend, if you keep on bending the knee, you will never have no rights. Sometimes you just got to stand up and say, no. So, you all could have said no to the mask, no to this, no to that, but you chose not to. You bent the knee. Sometimes you have to go against the grain. Now, I'm not a religious man. I don't go to church and all that, but I would fight all day long for y'all's right to pray. This way, you're teaching our children to bend the knee. The government said you had to do it, we're going to do it. Sometimes you got to say, why? Why do we got to do it? Sometimes you got to say, you can't make me do it. Sometimes you got to say, I'm not going to do it. So, pick one.
My name's William Holman. I'm from Castlewood. My question to y'all is, how often do you look and see why we're losing teachers and students from Castlewood? Do y'all stand behind your teachers? I know a lot of them tells me you don't, because they're afraid to speak of, of being fired. And we lose teachers and students from Castlewood, especially elementary, every year. Do you know why? You didn't even ask questions. I can tell you why. It's the one you got in the elementary school that runs it school. I've noticed it. My younger was in there for seven years. I noticed it for six. My mommy taught school at this county for years. She'll tell you, she ain't worth a dollar she's paid.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, we thank everyone for coming this evening. And Dr. Brown, do you have anything to add? Next meeting will be Thursday, September the second.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Do you have anything?
No, again, as future agenda items that I shared earlier, as far as the calendar is concerned, again, the board meeting will be our next event.
Go ahead, Ms. Garrett. And I would like to thank Belfast and Thorfree for the dinner we had tonight. It was great. Hope everyone a successful start of school next Monday. And need a motion to the chair?
So, there it comes.
Thank you, Mr. Postick. We have second. Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor?